Welcome to the September 22nd meeting of the Placer County Planning Commission. Would you please join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and in his hope of liberty and justice for all.
And I apologize in advance if I got a little horseboat voice here. I have a bad cold, but my doctor said last week that I don't have pneumonia, so that's good. Anyway, roll call, Kathy.
Mr. Akri?
Here.
Mr. Seveson's absent. Mr. Gray. Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Nader.
Here.
Mr. Rikuchi.
Here. A report from Planning Director EJ, you didn't have for us this morning.
But first, what I want to do is announce a new hire of the Engineering Inserted Vane Division. ESD has hired a new Assistant Engineer, Christina Lupercio, and Christina is in the back.
In the back.
Not a requirement to be in front, but anyway Christina comes from us, or comes from the city of Sacramento the last six years, primarily as an intern and then also as a junior engineer. So we are happy to have her on board. And then for planning, as you know, Roy Schaefer retired just a couple of weeks ago, and so we're currently trying to recruit for that position as well. Other than that, we're pretty much up to speed as far as our positions are concerned. So at the Board of Supervisors, the September 13th Tahoe meeting, the Board adopted the fiscal year 2016-2017 final budget. It's a budget at about $815 million. The Board also took tentative approval of the Marthis Valley West Parcel Specific Plan project, and that was continued to the October 11th Board Meeting, correct Karen, where they'll finalize that action.
Do you know why it was delayed, why they didn't just make a decision, Karen?
elected to reject the Planning Commission's recommendation. It was staff's recommendation that they take only tentative action to allow us to finalize all the ordinances and resolutions and findings to bring back.
Okay, thank you. I do have something I'd like to say with regards to that, if you don't mind. I want to take a second to do that.
Sure.
I'm proud of the work that this commission does, and my assessment, the commission is unquestionably thorough and diligent in their work. Each commissioner invests countless hours in reviewing staff reports, supporting documents, and meeting with applicants as well as opponents of the projects that come before them. They ask the hard questions, they ask the hard questions of staff and those that come before them in pursuit of making the best decisions for our communities. In my opinion, each commissioner brings a valuable perspective to the process, just as it is not right to say that the members of the Board of Supervisors cannot make credible decisions because they do not have degrees in public policy. Neither is it acceptable to say that the commission's recommendations are not sound because they do not have degrees in urban planning. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So following up with the remainder meetings, or the upcoming Board Meetings, the next one after the 13th is September 27th, where the Board will be hearing another update on the Sunset Area Plan, just like you, the commission will be hearing today. And then October 11th, like I mentioned, Marthis Valley will be going back to the Board. That meeting will be in Auburn. And also at that meeting is the Park at Granite Bay Project, which your commission made a recommendation on recently. As far as Planning Commission's schedule, October 13th, we have the Ovation Senior Living Project that's coming before you, that's in Granite Bay. That's the 114-unit, two-story assisted living facility. And also, you're going to get an update on the Emergency Shelter Zoning Text Amendment today, but hopefully we'll be back on 13th for you to take action on that as well. Then, second meeting in October, we do plan on going back up to Tahoe. That will be trip seven, if I'm not mistaken, just for Planning Commission. That will be at the North Tahoe Event Center in Kings Beach. There will be a draft EIR hearing on the Palisades Project. That's a 63-single-family-and-half-plex project. And then a draft EIR hearing for the Pumpjack Project, which is a redevelopment of the hotel site and conference center that exists there today. There may be a couple other smaller entitlement requests up in Tahoe that we put on that agenda as well. And November right now, we anticipate a November meeting. I'm just not sure when that's going to be right now, so I'll report more on that at the next meeting. And I believe that's all I have. One question, we had on the consent agenda, we have an action, or the action agenda from the previous meeting, and there's been a correction, so we have a corrected action agenda, just on the vote at the hearing, we had the vote wrong. You have a copy of that? I'm not sure we have to pull that off or not, Karen. Do we need to pull that off, or is that good enough?
It's on the consent, so...
Just note that change.
Okay.
That's all I have.
EJ, a question on the Squaw Valley Project. Does the Board of Supervisors have that scheduled yet for them?
So I don't believe there's been an official announcement of that date, but I know it won't be any sooner than November.
Okay.
And I anticipate that meeting to be up in the Tahoe area.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of EJ? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome back, Fred. Thanks.
Next item is a public comment, a time set aside in every agenda for the public to comment on any items that not on today's agenda. They want to bring something before the Board? Okay, seen none. We'll go to the consent agenda. There's two items on the consent item, extension of time for vesting tentative subdivision map, and also the approval of those August 25th Planning Commission minutes.
And for the record, that would be the corrected action agenda?
Corrected, okay. Does anyone want to pull anything off of the consent? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the corrected minutes, basically. Action item from the last meeting.
Okay. Been moved and...
Second.
Seconded. Roll call.
Mr. Akri?
Yes.
Mr. Seveson's absent. Mr. Gray's absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Rikuchi?
Yes. Okay, the first timed item here is 10:05, so it's 10:10, so we can go ahead. Informational update, Emergency Shelter Zoning Text Amendment.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Chair. Nikki Strigan, Associate Planner in the Planning Services Division, here today to present to you an information update on the proposed Emergency Shelter Zoning Text Amendment. In brief, the proposal is to add emergency shelters as an allowable land use in three additional zone districts with the approval of a conditional use permit, and those districts are heavy commercial, industrial, and industrial park. So just a bit of background here, in 2011, the Board of Supervisors adopted a zoning text amendment similar and related to this one in order to bring the code into compliance with some state housing law and implementing the 2009 housing element specifically as it relates to emergency shelters and some other special needs housing. Those housing types were, in total, emergency shelter, supportive housing, and transitional housing. The ZTA that is being proposed today just addresses emergency shelters. At that time, the Board of Supervisors' action included the definition, a new definition of an emergency shelter, and it defined appropriate zone districts where an emergency shelter could be located. So as the zoning ordinance reads today, they can be located in the list before you, residential multifamily, pardon me, neighborhood commercial, general commercial, commercial planned development, highway services, and resort. Resort, yes. And as I mentioned, that was done in concert with the housing element, as well as some state law known as SB 2. Little bit more background, this is a picture of the encampment that was established on the Placer County Government Center lawn in 2014. And I want to note that while it was a trigger for establishing the temporary shelter on the Government Center campus and for reevaluating the zoning ordinance as we are today, it certainly wasn't the only reason, you know, why we're taking a look at where homeless shelters or emergency shelters can go in the county. The county has long been working on homeless issues. They have a 10-year plan to end homelessness that they've worked on with local stakeholders and service providers. It's simply just one of those hard and ongoing problems that our communities face. But anyway, as a result, a temporary shelter was put in place at the County Government Center, and the Board of Directors provided some direction to staff with regard to expanding the allowable land uses for shelter services and the zone districts that are proposed in the ZTA. Here's the definition of an emergency shelter, and I'll just paraphrase here. Also known commonly as a homeless shelter, emergency shelters provide temporary housing for six months or less, and then they often include services such as meal preparation, an activities center, a daycare for homeless persons' children, or vocational rehabilitation. So there's just some of the activities that might be located in a facility. So the proposed changes, as I had mentioned, the addition of heavy commercial, industrial, and industrial park with a conditional use permit are being proposed as additions to the land use table. Secondly, we're just doing a cleanup here in terms of clarifying the location standard for shelters. Previously, it was established that if a shelter were proposed within 500 feet of a secondary school or an elementary school or a zone district where a shelter was not allowed, if it was in a 500-foot buffer, it would always be required, a use permit would always be required. We're not changing that, other than to clarify that the parcel on which the shelter is located, not the geographic center of the shelter, but the parcel, if that is within that 500-foot buffer, it would be subject to a use permit. So not much impact in terms of what we're proposing, since everything we're proposing would be subject to a use permit. It's just a cleanup of language.
Question for you, is there any zone district where this is an allowed use that does not require discretionary approval?
Sure, residential multifamily is that zone district, and the commission, and in fact, that was done based on, that's a state law that we have to have by right allowance, so it's residential multifamily.
It would seem to me that this is not exactly a compatible use to be near a school, and you're saying that it would need a use permit if it's within 500 feet?
Correct.
So if it's outside of that 500 feet, it doesn't need a special permit for that?
Depends on what zone district it's in.
Right.
And I'll show you the land use table. We're coming up on that slide next.
I'm still saying, it seems a little bit incompatible to me to be so close to a school.
Okay. Sure, we'll get to the land use table, and we can talk some more. Anyway, so last two changes here, one is a requirement for staffing, and the other is a requirement for a neighborhood management plan to be submitted with an application. Essentially, a neighborhood management plan would provide guidance for a forum to discuss issues with neighboring commercial businesses or residential neighborhoods. And then finally, a security planning requirement has been added to emphasize coordination with Sheriff's Office and essentially making the facility as safe as possible. So here's a look at the land use table, a little hard to read here, but you can see everywhere that is in black, that's what is allowed today and how the ordinance reads today. Under RM zoning clearance, or by right allowance, is established up there for shelters that are 60 or fewer and in an RM zone district. Then, of course, use permits are required for the other zone districts where they're currently allowed. We're proposing what is shown in red, which is allowance in C3, IN, and IMP with a conditional use permit. And then finally, looking at our timeline for adoption, we have, staff has been in the midst of presentations to many MACs. We intend to, I think there are three more we plan to go to between now and the start of October. Additionally, we're doing some outreach to the city of Lincoln. That was a comment that was made at the Rural Lincoln MAC just earlier this week, so we're working with them on some of the changes. We are, of course, here presenting to you today with an update and intend to come to, back to the commission in October for a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, and then hopefully to the Board of Supervisors for adoption by the end of the year. So that being said, I'm happy to take some brief questions for you if you have them.
You referenced that at the end of March, the temporary facility is to be closed. Is anybody working on an alternative? Because I guess my question is, where are those people going to go after March? Are we going to start seeing tents popping up around North Auburn again?
Right, so yeah, there is a section of the staff report that addresses what the impact of this text amendment is for the site here on campus and then other potential sites that some working groups have looked at. The shelter here at DeWitt could continue if a conditional use permit was approved, essentially, so...
So the supervisors could extend it? Because I thought that was a pretty hard sunset that they made at the end of March.
So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an extension if this zoning ordinance is approved, this zoning text amendment, rather, is approved? A conditional use permit would be required to keep, not a temporary one, but a conditional use permit would be required to keep this open. An application would have to be made to the county, and we would have to take it through the normal use permit process, and it could continue if that...
But to your knowledge, no alternative in the North Auburn area has been identified?
I haven't, I know that a working group was put in place that looked at some industrial and C3 sites in the North Auburn area. You know, nothing, to my knowledge, is viable right now.
Yeah, I would guess that if the supervisors approve this ordinance, that they would have the ability to extend the temporary until a conditioning use permit is developed. That'd be my guess, but...
In actuality, the zoning code for the temporary use permit allows a one-time extension of the temporary use permit up to a maximum of one year. That was exercised by the Board, and that time will run in March, as Nikki was mentioning.
So that'll be a firm time, then? Okay, so that'll be the supervisors' challenge to figure out how that was. Let me see, I wanted to go back under residential multifamily. Now, you were saying that if they were within 500 feet of a school, they have to get a use permit? Okay.
Correct. As it reads today...
Look at the chart, it doesn't say that, or maybe it does someplace, but...
Correct, yeah, as the ordinance reads today, if it is within 500 feet from a secondary or elementary school, a use permit is always required.
Okay, thank you.
Nikki, when the county comes up with an ordinance like this, is this forward to, like, to the cities, like the city of Roseville, and so to help them, I guess, plow through the same issue? Or is it...
I'm not sure, I don't know.
I'm going to bring this, I'm going to bring this copy to them anyway, but I thought...
Yeah, we can add those cities to our distribution.
It says countywide, but I know it only applies to county property. But, okay, I'll bring it, I'll bring it to them.
Sure, and we can certainly add them to our distribution list as we continue to do review.
There's a much larger discussion going on that involves several departments in
the county, including Health and Human Services, and the disciplines that handle on a routine basis, everything from the Section 8 housing to the types of services that are involved. And if I'm not mistaken, those discussions also include the other jurisdictions to some extent. So, you know, while we're looking to address the issue within the county per se, I think the acknowledgement by everybody is that it's much larger.
Okay.
I hate to use the word global, but global issue, that there are plenty of discussions going on on all facets of this.
Staff level, okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Does the definition of school include licensed private daycare or preschool operations?
I would, I will have to check our definitions, but the way the ordinance reads it cites elementary and secondary school.
Okay. Are there any other... Go ahead, Jeffrey.
Timing wise, if somebody were to apply for a conditional use permit, start to finish, what would you tell them how long it would take?
That was a nice question, Jeffrey.
Should I answer that?
EJ, EJ, maybe you can answer that one.
Maybe you want to end on that one. Well, any entitlement is subject to environmental review, so whether it's an exempt project or not, which I would assume it would not be, might have to go through environmental review. You know, typically, it's four to six months. So that's what I would say.
Okay, thank you, EJ. Any other questions of... Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I want to go back on the school issue. Do you know where that came from? Because to me, they do not seem compatible. I mean, sometimes we don't exactly know who these people are. And is that, is the state, because you mentioned reference the state, is the state giving some guidelines as to where these type of facilities are appropriate? I mean, are they suggesting that schools would be okay, near schools?
Well, you know, so it was actually the commission, I think, in 2009 or 11, when that previous ZTA came by the commission at the time, who had discussed that buffer at length. And the buffer was, you know, sort of addressing what you're getting at, which is, there's some incompatibility. We need a use permit to vet if it is an appropriate use, if it's in proximity to a school, and that is why that language was added.
Well, I'd just like to say, from our personal standpoint, I don't think that those uses should be that close together.
Yeah, the 500, I think, appears elsewhere, like I think on the ABC liquor licenses, they have to be 500 feet away from a school, and I think 500 is referenced elsewhere, too, so it's kind of a, I won't say it's a standard, but it's a fallback position in a lot of these ordinances, I think. Not that it makes it right or wrong, but it's kind of a, I don't know, 500, I guess, sounded good to the people that were pretty...
Sure, yeah, and I can look, Mr. Nader, I can look a little further into why that 500. I don't know that it was related to state law, but I can look further into our previous staff report and the discussion to see why it was established.
Are there any other questions of Nikki at this time? Okay, thank you, Nikki. Members of the audience at this time, would you like to comment on this text revision? If not, I'll close the public hearing. I don't think we need any actions, this was informational, is that correct? Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the second item here, Status Report on the Sunset Area Plan Update. And let's see, who's handling this for us? Sheri.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Been a while.
Good morning.
If I can operate my tool. Well, in the interim, since I was here last, we've been very busy, a big group of us, been forging ahead, per the Board's direction, to update what I would like to refer to as the Sunset Area Plan. We're trying to move away from the word industrial, because it conjures up different things for different folks, certainly. It's a new dawn, it's no longer 1997, which was when our current plan was last adopted. So where are we? Where have we been since I was here before you last? Per the work program for the Sunset Area Plan, we endeavored and completed a very thorough and robust existing conditions report, and that actually was a snapshot, if you will, at the Sunset Area today, the 8100-acre area surrounded by the cities, the jurisdictions of Lincoln, Rockland, and Roseville in South Placer County. In tandem with the existing conditions report, we embarked upon a pretty deep dive, which is the economic market analysis, and that positioned us to understand and ultimately help us inform the land uses that may come forward. The economic market analysis looked at things like, where are we competitively within the regional market for what industry cluster types? What do we need to get there? So if we look at the ensuing decades as far as the Sunset Area and why essentially it failed to launch, this market study really helped to identify some key findings as to why it has not become the job center that was ultimately envisioned. From there, we took some key findings from the first two reports, and we put together an Opportunities and Constraints Analysis. So that looked at both environmental constraints and opportunities, as well as man-made constraints and opportunities. So it helps us to hone down even further what we need to do to get from here to there. And then finally, before you, and included in your staff report packet is the Draft Alternative Report. So that essentially takes the findings from the first three documents, coalesces them, and ultimately reflects some suggestions for new land use in the Sunset Area. So those three documents that culminated to the report that you have today identified some pretty substantial findings. Real quickly, the lack of identity for the Sunset Area, an expanded employment base. We know that the areas surrounding Sunset are full of highly educated workforce who are traveling elsewhere for their daily jobs, that we need to really focus on some proactive and strategic economic development strategies, that the development demand is there, we know that. We know that inquiries come in through our county and through the Greater Sacramento Area Council daily, looking for large tracts of land, so we know the demand is out there. We have the unique opportunity with our ownership groups out there, and in fact, that's where I was this morning, meeting with one such group, for the 8100 acres, the vast majority of the Sunset Area is owned by fewer than 10 ownership entities. So that tells you something about the magnitude of the acreages these ownership groups are waiting to develop. We also found that within the Sunset Area, we have a number of incompatible uses, so industrial next to indoor recreation, for example. So we've introduced over the, you know, past few decades, the issue of land use consistency and in certain areas, certainly some incompatible uses. The transportation system, obviously there, we've got a rail spur, we've got railroad, we've got interstates and good surface streets. We are on the cusp of the Placer Parkway Phase 1, so we feel pretty confident we can get there. And then, of course, with the good comes the bad, the majority of the Sunset Area lacks critical backbone infrastructure, so in the form of sewer, water, and some additional utilities. That's prevented some of these properties from really fully developing. Feel free to interrupt me anytime.
See, Charlene?
Sheri.
Ah, Sheri, I mean...
Sorry, I didn't even, Sheri Conway, Planning Services.
Yeah, sorry about that. You were saying that indoor recreation is incompatible? I was wondering where that, I mean...
Where?
Why?
Why, where? During the economic downturn, a number of large warehouse developments that had been constructed just at the cusp of 2006, 2007, really were having difficulty in landing appropriate tenants for some of those facilities. Ultimately, some decisions were made to issue conditional use permits to a variety of basketball, gymnastics, volleyball, a number of, you know, kind of types of uses that really require large 20,000, 30,000-square-foot buildings that hadn't really been divided up, that were essentially still in the warehouse form. So we have a number of those uses right now in the southeast corner of the Sunset Area, right alongside fully functioning heavy industrial with semi-truck traffic uses. So it certainly presents some health and safety concerns. You know, we don't like to have little kids, you know, in the way of semi-trucks, so we certainly have identified, as far as all of the assets that we sit on currently out there, there are also some constraints. There are some issues that have to be overcome if we're going to fully realize the potential of the job center that... There are some issues that have to be overcome if we're going to fully realize the potential of the job center that, that Sunset is. So, yeah, I would say the southeast corner, where there's a number of large warehouse industrial buildings are, are now occupied by everything from churches to basketball to trampolines to soccer to karate, baseball, golf. The list goes on and on.
Well, I guess, you're talking about heavy industrial, you know, I guess what I'm kind of comparing with is when you get into the city of Roseville, there's several, several similar situations. I don't know if it's heavy industrial, but I think the city of Roseville has been permitting certain recreational activities in some of the warehouses also.
And that's why most of these uses did obtain conditional use permits. And so they came before you at some point in the last decade or so. I think it's really a function of, of a number of factors, including access. So access for some of these specific uses in the Sunset area is very limited. It's a dead end road. There's one way in and out. So we have some concerns about emergency crews being able to provide access. We have actual data from our fire folks who have said that it is an enormous problem for them right now in being able to be responsive to calls that they get down on the Tinker Road area. There are also site distance issues in and out of Tinker Road. Essentially, the site and the road were designed for industrial uses, not the number of traffic trips that, for example, are generated by a large basketball tournament. So, you know, over time, these uses have grown and been very successful by all accounts, but they've sort of outgrown their, their capacity as far as the properties that they occupy. So certainly something to look at as we move forward and try to encourage, you know, compatible uses. We certainly want to ensure everyone's.
Really an encouragement. I guess, you know, maybe lead on, you know, not that I'm promoting it, you know, I, I don't know on this. I don't know the difference, really. I'm not the planner. But as far as you're, you just talked about the emergency access. Is the plan ultimately going to provide for a better circulation?
We'll, we'll look at the map in a minute. Yes, certainly for the undeveloped areas of Sunset. But again, that what we, well, let me move on to the map. Jumping ahead a little bit, Mr. Johnson, so the, the purple, there's a thing on here, right? What I'll call this purple, this is essentially your developed industrial area. What's being brought before you today is, is essentially a proposal to allow this area to remain light industrial. So we're calling it industrial infill. So it's more or less, I would say it's about seventy-five percent built out. On any of these properties, some of them are underdeveloped, meaning that there's additional FARs, floor area ratio, that could be brought forward. But essentially, this would probably remain, depending on your input and ultimately the board's decision, what we'd call a light industrial area. It is within this area that we do have some of those incompatible recreational and religious uses happening. So this will remain sort of the, the traditional, but perhaps with a lighter touch. I think with the new plan, we'll see less heavy industrial and more light industrial in the terms of advanced manufacturing along those lines.
So there really is an opportunity, given what the fire department said as far as access, there is not a.
Not on that road, no.
To make the circulation better with this plan?
For areas to the west, yes. For that area that I'm referring to, probably not.
Okay.
It, it works for the uses for which the original zoning intended. It doesn't work for the magnitude of traffic that are being generated by the uses that are there currently.
Okay, so that seems to be the major issue, is the traffic?
Traffic, yeah, I would say that's probably, and, and just compatibility in general. When, I mean, I'm a parent, and when kids are young, they don't necessarily look both ways. And you want to make sure that when children are, you know, in the presence of large and, you know, heavy industrial machinery and trucks, that, that everyone stays safe. So there's, there's some concern on the part of my discussions with the, the fire department that maybe.
You say heavy industrial or light industrial?
Right now, this is a, a heavy industrial area. The, the purple has, has everything from, you know, propane tanks and chipping facilities to heavy manufacturing facilities, lay down yards, warehouses. Volkswagen's recently leased the building on Tinker Road, so they're doing a fairly large warehouse and distribution operation out there.
And so, so that zoning won't change. You say it's heavy industrial and the zoning won't change then?
It, it will remain industrial, but with a slightly lighter touch. So it will change. Right now, it's currently zoned an industrial park, IMP. So it's likely to remain IMP or, you know, there could be a change to a light industrial. But certainly getting away from the heavier IN, which you do have out here, too, which is really the heaviest industrial zone district that we have in the county. We'd like to get away from that and try to move towards something that's more reflective of what the market is looking for, based on our data and our studies.
The uses though will probably stay the same until they decide.
For the purple, I would say, yeah, for the purple.
Sheri, where's the, where's the justice center there on that map?
It's right to the south of the Sunset area.
Oh, it's right there?
Uh huh. So it's right inside the city limits.
Yeah, I mean, I know where it's at, but I kind of lost it on the, on the.
Yeah, it's, it doesn't jump out at you. But you wouldn't access it from Sunset. You actually access it from industrial to the south. You would come up here, or you would come down here, but you don't get it, you don't get here.
Sheri, did, when we did our analysis as to why things weren't happening out of there, did, did the fee structure get discussed?
We, we did a number of interviews with businesses out there and, and some of the property owners out there, and that was pointed out in some of our.
Have you talked to some of the brokers that are getting told no before it even gets to the property owners?
Some of that was true and some of that was perception. So we did find that there was some perception that Placer County's fees were higher, and we vetted that internally. And, you know, it wasn't necessarily true, but again, perception is, is important because it drives business decisions, so.
And also the process?
The process was another piece of information that we extracted very early on. So became, before we began even the economic market analysis, we did a survey, a really robust in tandem with the Economic Development Department to try to understand from the property owners and from the development perspective, what, what was going on. So yes, the process, sequo, entitlements, the perception of the time it took. There were, there were a myriad of, of opinions, I'll say. And, and so that's why this, coming about this land use planning process from that angle has been very informational, it's very informative, and it's, it's very useful. It's a very.
More important than identity and the, the sidewalk fluff.
Absolutely.
We need to look at, at the process that people are asked to go through. We zone property, but then if you want to use it for what it's owned for, you still need to.
Still need to use.
The whole process. And I think we need to look at entitling property where they know they can just come in and build, based on what it's zoned. Then we're going to get serious looks, assuming that the fees get made appropriate also. And I think more so, I think that's, that's the critical area. Because I think other jurisdictions are making it more accommodating.
We, we heard that.
Getting the users.
And per, and, and Mr. Moss is right, per the nineteen ninety-seven Sunset Industrial Plan, area plan, virtually every, every use in any of the zone districts are subject to a conditional use permit. Very, very few are just zoning clearance. So with that comes sequo typically. And, and four to six months, not unusual. So it is, it is, when you're talking about the economic job center for the county, sometimes that does factor into businesses' decisions to come. So certainly, we, we were able to really, and, and are captured more robustly in your staff report, really hone in on what are the assets and opportunities. Those are the good things. And then we really took a deep dive into what are the weaknesses and what are the threats? Because without looking at that, it will be difficult to set it up for success. So we did. We had to look at the good and the bad and a little bit of the ugly. And that's all reflected in this land use diagram before you today. And I do want to also point out that the colors on this map and the associated development standards were also reflective of a very robust property owner outreach. Series of interviews and meetings that we had over the course of several days. Remember, I mentioned that the vast majority of the parcels that are held out here, fewer than ten ownership groups. So we actually brought them each in. They sat with our consultant team and our staff and hours and hours talked about, you know, the findings of our research and our studies. And then we were able to listen and get a lot of very valuable input from these property owners as to what their vision was and what their, their desires were for ultimate development of the property. So we went back and we adjusted the land use diagram that you see here. And so this reflects not only our data and our research, but what the property owners' visions also were. And so let me run through it quickly because I know that we've got some other pieces of this presentation. As we talked about, the purple will remain industrial, really a lighter touch, though. Moving directly to the north and then a little piece right here on the south side of Sunset, Business Park. And the definitions, of course, are similar to what we currently have in the zoning ordinance today. But certainly concurrent with a lot of the findings from our economic market study. Jumping right across, oops, let's see if I can't do this, jumping across to, on the other side of industrial, so we cross the train tracks. This is a brand new color, and this is a brand new land use designation being suggested and proposed ultimately for action by your commission and then the board. And we're calling this the Entertainment Mixed Use District. And so the definitions are embedded in your staff report, but let me just capture what the vision is there. This designation provides for entertainment oriented uses, intended to draw visitors and customers from beyond South Placer County. It is intended to leverage the excellent transportation access at the future Placer Parkway-Foothills Boulevard interchanges, as well as visibility from the Parkway, State Route sixty-five, and proximity to the existing Thunder Valley Resort Casino. So the uses, of course, would be anything entertainment related, super regional destination, retail, shopping, lodging, restaurants, healthcare. And so we wanted to acknowledge some of the findings from our market study, recognize that we have something very unique in this quadrant of the Sunset area plan that was never articulated or even envisioned in the nineteen ninety-seven plan in form of the resort casino. So it's clearly an anchor, and that clearly influences the land uses in and around that northeast corner. So the Entertainment Mixed Use District will have specific zoning and zoning overlays that would speak to this very brand new land use designation for the county's general plan, as well as the Sunset area plan. Moving, and jump in anytime.
Sheri, I was going to say, right next door is the Innovation Center.
Yeah.
To the west.
Mm-hmm.
And there's nothing in that area right now that applies to that, right? Is that correct? It's to hope to generate businesses that would be.
Exactly.
Would fit that profile.
Exactly, so going back to.
What would be the profile of, of a type of business in there that would fit this?
What, are you asking what would be the?
What would be the profile of a business?
So our research and our data concluded that the, the demand for corporate campuses, for R and D, for research parks, typically the number one box that they're looking to tick is acreage. And so certainly those two parcels represent just shy of four hundred acres. That's a sizable amount of property. When a potential corporate campus headquarters comes knocking, many jurisdictions can't be responsive. They simply don't have that kind of acreage. So it was with that in mind, and based on a lot of the research on those specific industry clusters that were pointed to in the economic market study, I'll just capture a little bit of that definition, since you brought it up. A mix of industry clusters such as IT, life sciences, knowledge creation, et cetera, with a mix of small and large operation, operations in an amenity-rich setting with a high level of finish. So what does that mean? It means to be competitive, really, in today's market. You know, the big Bay Area companies are providing amenities, not just in the form of a picnic table outside of, you know, the office building. It's a full-fledged campus where folks come and they spend the majority of their day, and they are able to avail themselves of running trails or some retail operations that would support. You know, I can go to lunch, I can get my dry cleaning, I can take a jog, you know. So these are the amenity-rich components in that innovation district that would become part of the development standards were these properties to be developed. With the idea that, that really positions us more competitively to, to, you know, attract that type of user. Let's see, I want to keep moving on. Moving directly to the west are the properties that are held by the West Placer Waste Management Authority. And based on, again, a lot of the research that came out of our market study, the conclusion was there is, is a very unique opportunity to take these holdings that maybe have been traditionally looked upon as a constraint. You know, the landfill could be a constraint in some, in some circles. But knowing that as federal and state mandates to recover more and more and more of the waste stream just continue, that the opportunity for business is great. So whether it's diversifying the recyclable and enhancing the recovery recyclable materials at the materials recovery facility which currently exists, or dabbling in expanded methane capture or anaerobic digestion of compost, organics materials, or pilot sites for alternative energies such as solar arrays. The properties that are held by the Waste Management Authority present a unique opportunity to generate demand for users of, of some of those end materials or to ground lease to companies that may want to do some kind of alternative energy exploration. So just because, again, that's a brand new land use designation that we are bringing forward. I want to just read a couple of snippets of what that really means. The eco-industrial designation provides for industrial and manufacturing uses focused on alternative waste to energy technologies, recovery and reuse of materials, solid waste-related research and development, and related advanced manufacturing, perhaps in conjunction with nearby universities, which we haven't even talked about yet. The viability of these uses would be enhanced by the reorientation of some of the landfill authority operations within its property. So, so you see, we've kind of gone from what could have been historically looked upon as a constraint or a nuisance to a true opportunity, and that's reflected in this proposed land use designation. As we travel further to the west, we have this area of brown or suede. And right now, we're looking at a designation of an urban reserve with a fairly low floor area ratio. And that's, that's due to a number of, of reasons. First and foremost, our economic market analysis concluded that the, the demand, the absorption capacity for non-residential land, which is the majority of the Sunset area outside of Placer Ranch, is in the endearns of three to five hundred acres per, you know, per year over, over this twenty-year horizon. So the likelihood that the demand would, would be tripped such that that farther west area would be consumed within the twenty-year planning horizon, it's a fairly low projection. However, if there were to come along some very unique opportunity that that property owner felt warranted and justified the investment in the infrastructure to bring that infrastructure that far west, we wanted to give it an opportunity in the form of the urban reserve designation to develop if, if the opportunity did come along. But recognizing that truthfully, we've got more land than demand over this first twenty-year horizon. Now, over forty or fifty years, certainly, I think there's plenty of opportunity to see build outright to the western portion of the area plan.
Sheri, your question, since they're working on the Placer Conservation Plan, how does that overlay on this area? I mean, obviously, there's some restrictions that are proposed based on that plan. Is, is that limit what can be done here?
Both. So to the first point, limit. The area in this olive, we shall call it olive. So to the first point, limit, the area in this olive, we shall call it olive, we're calling Preserve Mitigation Reserve. And that's due to the fact that the vast majority of those properties are either already under some kind of mitigation bank designation or are in the process of being brought in as mitigation banks. So ultimately, those areas would not be for development. They do provide mitigation banking opportunities for development elsewhere in the county. But to your question relative to the PCCP, the entire Sunset Area is what's known as yellow on the big map, which is slated for development. So outside of a floodplain, the idea that the PCCP would enable development to occur where previously it's been very limited, and it's required individual projects to go through individual 404 permit process requirements with the federal agencies. So the PCCP actually will enable development to occur pretty much outside of the olive area intensively. And that's why the FARs on your table are as high as they are, predicated upon the PCCP moving forward, predicated upon the backbone infrastructure being delivered to the areas in the Sunset that currently aren't served by them.
The reason I ask that is that area is just chock-full of wetlands. And it is, given the type, soil types out there in the hard pan, it just holds water out there and all those little swales, so.
Yeah, and the further north you go, the truer that is. If we had a really wet winter and just driving out there in March myself, I was stunned at how much water there was out there. It's a very good point. Moving, before I hand it over to Michelle, I just want to make sure I haven't overlooked, we have a little bit of this, and this is what we'll call general commercial. And this is very deliberate. We want to capture the opportunity for the traveling public as they exit Sunset and they approach the Placer Ranch property to avail themselves of services that currently don't exist anywhere in Sunset. So whether it was a service station or a convenience store, certainly not slated for heavy, large-box retail, it's intended to serve the traveling public off of Highway 65. And as they enter into the Sunset Area, and specifically as they move west into the Placer Ranch.
Isn't all that built out already into industrial-type buildings and stuff?
Well, to the north, some is, that's the Placer, well, all of it is essentially part of the Placer Corporate Center. To varying degrees, it's never really fully built out. The northern areas have development, but they're largely vacant.
But there's not a whole lot of raw dirt out there left for a commercial-type center.
To the south, it's all vacant, it's undeveloped. So the properties to the south of the interchange are vacant. The properties to the north are more or less built out with a myriad of uses or nonuses. So one of the questions we asked was, why are those buildings vacant? Why has the Placer Corporate Center not built out and gotten, you know, their vacancies down? And again, in talking with property owners and brokers and developers, we were hearing, we were hearing a lot, but certainly, commercial at that interchange was something that property owners were more desirous of, and what we recognized as something lacking right now out in Sunset. So if you work at a business down on Cincinnati, whoops, geez, I just killed it.
Somebody cut you off.
Yeah, it's just, that's it, my time is done. If you work at a business currently out here on industrial, over here on Cincinnati, and you, and lunchtime comes, and you'd like a sandwich, your choices are pretty limited. You can go up to the casino, or you can cross over 65 and go into Rockland. So that's the intention behind a swath of general commercial there. Doesn't mean that would be the only type of commercial you'd see, but it's a very specific kind of commercial tailored to, you know, the traveling public as opposed to a destination retail.
Let me see, seems to me, at one point in time, we did look at a use permit on the south of that, and apparently they must have given up on that.
It expired, yeah, and they've come back in now, and they'd like to do kind of a reiteration of a service station, a gas station, convenience store.
When they're coming back in, they're looking at the type of use that you're talking about.
Right, and you know, what's interesting is the economy is certainly on an upswing, and it's been a fascinating process to work through this analysis with this advanced planning perspective. But at the same time, each and every day, there's an inquiry, there's a meeting, there are folks coming in wanting to do something today. And so, you know, there's lots and lots of interest, there's lots of activity. If infrastructure is available to the site, those properties are moving. The properties that are waiting very patiently, I would say, are the properties to the west of industrial and specifically Cincinnati and Foothill. But we entertain pre-development meetings constantly, particularly out here now that things are starting, you know, the economy's ticking upward, there's been a lot of change of ownership. So it's a challenging time when folks come in and have a vision about a project, and it may be consistent with the colors on the map that you see, and sometimes it's not. And so trying to articulate where we'd like to go, you know, in terms of changing some land use and ultimately changing some zoning, may or may not be their vision. So it's been a really, I think, collaborative process. So what you see here really is reflective of some, kind of my everyday calls and meetings that I take with people who want to do something right now. And so us getting a lot of input, which is helping to shape this plan sort of in a real-world context. So it's certainly not being done in a vacuum or an ivory tower. It's reflective of what the property owners have told us. And I will tell you one other anecdote in that we're looking at more or less adding some value to properties that previously were designated either as ag or as industrial. And so for the most part, most of these designations are going to change to something different. In one of the meetings with some of the, one property owner and their ownership group, they said, "Well, thank you very much for the, you know, the upzoning, but I'd prefer to stay industrial." Because that was the model, that was the product type that this ownership group felt most comfortable pursuing as far as development. And so it isn't always the case that, you know, an augmentation of land use translates to something that everyone wants. And so we made that adjustment, and the map does reflect that adjustment. So we were very willing to listen and take feedback from the property owners because ultimately, it's their investment, and so.
Sherry, it seems like, and I think you addressed this, not today, but it's addressed in here, that given the wide range of business types that are proposing in this, calling it the Sunset Industrial Area doesn't exactly apply anymore. Something more generic like the Placer Power Center or something like that.
Ooh, I like that.
Would be more appropriate, I would think.
Write that down. You know, you are absolutely right, Mr. Nader, and I think that's why I've been on this, going a little rogue and not wanting to keep calling it the SIA. For 40 years, we've known it, you know, as the SIA. And industrial at one time meant something, you know, that meant jobs. And I think as time has marched forward and we're in the era of essentially everything being electronic and computer-driven, you know, the ideas of smokestacks really isn't applicable, certainly not to what our findings were. So we needed to get through the analysis to come up with a proposed sort of set of land uses. I never even got to those next slides. But the next step is branding, the next step is selling it, right?
I have a marketing background.
I could see that, so maybe we should talk. So obviously, we didn't want to, we didn't want to, out of the gate, call it something new until we knew what it was. But clearly, we need to reinvent it, not just in terms of colors on the map, in terms of uses and what people recognize outside of this area when they're looking to land the headquarters of a business, how are they going to know that this place is on the map? And it's something special.
I have a question about a business that's there currently, the Rio Bravo biomass plant. Where exactly is that? Is it by the Placer Parkway, it's going to, the Placer Parkway is just almost going to clip it.
Yes.
Somewhere.
So it lies right here in this corner.
So is Placer Parkway going to run right over the top of it? Is that going to happen?
They actually clip just the bottom eighth quarter. Your colleagues are here, jump in any time, about the bottom quarter, let's say quarter.
Because I know that most of the biomass plants in California are shutting down because their contracts have come to an end with PG&E or whatever the utility is in the area, and they're just, because of the natural gas prices, they can't compete, so they're shutting down. So I didn't know if this one is still active or not.
I understand they have a power purchase agreement good through 2017. They're looking at, you know, extending that out for some period. I don't know how long, or I don't know any details ultimately. They are part of the conversations that we had with the property owners out there.
So it's not in the entertainment area, right?
It is.
Okay.
Wouldn't you know. It is, and that entertainment area, like you pointed out, Mr. Nader, kind of gets clipped right at that tail by the right-of-way. That alignment isn't quite dead-on, but you get the idea. I just want to make sure I haven't overlooked anything. I talked about these, and certainly, they're in your staff report. What I'd like to do, then, the last designation, the last part of the map that we haven't spoken about, is this part of the map. And this is essentially represents a one-third of the acreage comprised, that comprises the Sunset Area. See, I didn't say industrial area. And with the board's decision to direct staff to prepare a specific plan for that area, I was going to turn it over to Michelle and her team so she could answer your questions, and I'm right here too. So I don't know that we needed to go into this, but back to your question about FARs, this is really where it gets down into the detail of how much land is there actually out there that we see develop within each of those categories. And I think the next slide is Michelle's, there it is. So with that.
Yeah?
I talked so long, I'm sorry.
Good morning, Commissioners, Michelle Kingsbury, analyst with the CEO's Office and commonly known as now the project manager for the county of the Placer Ranch specific plan. Also here with me today, in the audience, if questions do arise, is Mark Sauer and Vance Jones from McKay &amp; Somp, civil engineer firm, who the county has contracted to assist from a project management and technical side with the Placer Ranch specific plan, as well as George Phillips, who represents the property owner. With that, I think a picture is worth a thousand words, I'm going to flip to the land use plan here and go into a bit more detail about the Placer Ranch specific plan. This specific plan has been around in some form or fashion for over a decade, I believe. More recently, with West Park Communities processing the plan through the city of Roseville. At the end of 2015, for business purposes and decisions, West Park ceased processing that plan through the city. And with all things, there are opportunities as well. Certainly with this land plan, the cornerstone is a satellite campus for the Sac State University. And the board took quite a bold decision back in the beginning of April to put their, I would call it, the developer hat on and lead the charge processing this specific plan along with the update of the Sunset Area Plan and bringing this project to fruition. And so consequently, as a result of that action, I now function more like a developer than a planner or analyst. But certainly, I'll get into more detail with the specific plan. It's located, as Sherry mentioned, it's about a quarter to a third of the land area within the Sunset Area Plan. It's located entirely within the area plan. It shares a, if I can do this right, a three-mile border with the city of Roseville on the southern portion. In addition, we have the landfill, make this, whoops, at the top, if I can get the clicker to work. Currently, as proposed, the land plan has approximately 5,800 residential units, excluding university, about 6.3 million of square footage of non-university-related uses that primarily are focused up in the lavender area toward the top. We call that our campus park designation. It's meant to be a flexible land use designation to play off those uses that would result from the university being there, such as your business park, your office park. It could include retail, R&amp;D, those very complementary type of uses. Where with the Sunset Area Plan proper, has much larger portions of land that can have more of a campus setting. What Placer Ranch does is complement that with more smaller parcels, that could be single-user buildings, multiple-user buildings, et cetera. But similar to what you see around Sac State and Sacramento right now with those professional uses that surround the campus. One of the other highlights within the Placer Ranch specific plan, I'm not going to be able to get the clicker to work, is in the westerly portion where you see the red and brown, that is what we call our university center. It is really meant to be a high-energy urban center that plays off the student population that's traveling back and forth from the university. You have Sunset Boulevard that comes right through and bisects that as the entry point ultimately for the university. And it's meant to have more higher-density residential, off-site university student housing, for instance, as well as what we call a lifestyle center that could have complementary uses for the campus, such as outdoor cafes, bookstores. You're kind of eating those types of lifestyle centers, as well as maybe a movie theater that anchors the core, you know, outdoor farmer's market, et cetera. And later on, the presentation will have a schematic of kind of the uses we are envisioning for that area. But of course, the cornerstone of Placer Ranch is the satellite campus for the Sac State. It's envisioned ultimately at full build-out to be comparable to the existing campus today that we have in Sacramento, with approximately 30,000 student population, approximately 5,000 faculty, approximately 3 million square feet of university uses on-site, which can include, you know, your buildings, your student housing. There's envisioning a performing arts center at the entry point as Sunset Boulevard comes into the plan, and really kind of corners and anchors all those university uses that Placer County is blessed with, with both the regional university project with Warwick University, as well as the expansion of William Jessup right across Highway 65 in the city of Rockland. And as well as, we have a strong partnership with Sierra College. For this particular campus, Sierra College is one of those partners as well with what we call a transfer station that they're proposing onsite on the campus for approximately 5,000 students. So for instance, if you go to Sierra College on this campus, you can almost, you can essentially complete your four years on this campus with both your Sierra College training as well as transferring into Sac State on campus and having a very unique opportunity. It's kind of like a one-stop shop, which I think would be unique for this region. And when the board took the action back in April to direct staff to be, put their developer hat on and process a specific plan in conjunction with the area plan update, a large part was, the decisions were made largely from the economic outputs that a university such as this benefits the region as a whole. I believe at full build-out, and pull my numbers and quote myself, but I believe the construction budget alone, on a full build-out of a university of this scale, gets close to a billion dollars. We're looking at annual operating budget of, you know, several hundred million dollars for the university alone. You count that in with the uses and kind of your students needing to eat, drink, play, you know, around the surrounding area, it really creates this economic multiplier that benefits the region as a whole, not only from the educational point of view, but from the spending power and outputs that go into both adjacent jurisdictions such as city of Roseville, city of Rockland, and city of region. So this creates really a regional asset that we're very proud to lead forward. As part of that effort, also includes, and what McKay &amp; Somp is really charging those efforts, we are underway with technical study updates, which include both your sewer, your stormwater, your drainage, your water, your recycled water, et cetera, your dry utilities. We are hoping to have those studies into the county hands the first week of October, so coming up quickly. We'll be a month later having an updated traffic study that will be submitting at probably the beginning of November. It's lagging a little bit behind as we're looking at updated traffic counts related to the Whitney Interchange that just opened, as well as updating a specific plan that we will be submitting to the county and ultimately would be embedded and nested within the area plan update. I know I speak quickly. In addition, we have a 10-acre school site and 21-acre middle school site that are proposed. Those would be in the Roseville City School District. We have quite a bit of parks and open space uses. As Mr. Nader mentioned, you know, there are the creek corridors and things like that, so there'll be open space preserves within this development. It is within the PCCP, what we call Yellow Area, so it is within that urban developable area within the PCC plan, and we're hoping to kind of. area within the PCC plan, and we're hoping to kind of parlay off those benefits associated with PCCP in terms of developing this project. In addition, we worked with kind of our regional partners with both water, with PCWA, city of Roseville, we're looking at opportunities for drainage into recent farms. So we'll have some public and quasi-public uses as well on this site in terms of recycled water tanks, water tanks, and other types of infrastructure. One of the benefits of this project and in support of the Sunset area plan is the ability to take it down to a deeper dive in terms of entitlement and environmental review, so that we can get those core backbone infrastructure stubbed in, in support of the area plan in and of itself. And as I mentioned earlier, this is a schematic drawing of a potential opportunity for the university town center and that lifestyle center. You could have in the westerly corners, some outdoor cafes and eating areas that could open up into a farmer's market, and then you can transition into the more higher-density residential, and kind of creating that unique student village or off-site university village that could be associated with this development. Catch up on my notes. I speak quickly, so certainly we are available to answer any questions. I also would like to highlight, back in July, we entered into an MOU with the property owner, and as part of that MOU, it outlined kind of our roles and responsibilities as we're looking toward processing the specific plan. But I do want to highlight the partnership that we have with the property owner in terms of their commitment to other, the regional assets and regional projects that we are working on. They're committed to dedicating approximately 21 acres, which is the first phase of the Placer Parkway right-of-way that's on this property. So they're definitely committed to those types of projects that we are working on as well, that complement the area plan update. Placer Parkway Phase 1 is certainly one of those types of projects. As staff, we're also looking and working with PCWA in terms of their expansion of the overwater treatment plant and bringing water across Placer Parkway, so that it would serve our West Placer developed areas and future development areas. In addition to that, and I won't say I am an expert in this, I know our treasurer is working on what we call our choice community aggregation policies in those early stages of feasibility analysis, as we're looking at energy loads and getting back to Commissioner Moss, your questions about basically how to make business, how to do business here cheaper and more effectively and efficiently. And so as staff, we're working on a multitude of levels to really bring this area to success. With that, I certainly will conclude my presentation, and although quick, certainly here to answer any questions that you may have, as well as McCann-Somps is here too for more technical information if you so desire.
What's the timing to start this process, I mean, start Placer Ranch?
So currently, right now, we're underway with updating the technical studies and specific plan in part, and process with the area plan update. Our goal is to be complete with the environmental documentation. We have a scent environmental on contract by the end of 2017 and before you, for hearings. And then from there, you roll in, as you know, you roll into the improvement plan, the finishing up, the permitting process from there. It's a little, you know, from a timeline point of view, it'd be a guess right there.
Right. So you're anticipating that sometime during 2017, that part of the process will be complete?
Right, toward the latter half of 2017.
Right.
Correct.
And then it's obviously up to them and how the market is at that point, whether they're going to start their project.
That's correct.
And you mentioned phases. Has it basically moved from east to west as far as phasing?
We're envisioning the initial phase to be more the residential portion that is toward the southerly-
Be on the west then?
Right, pulling in water that's existing right now in the more industrial area. And so, but as Placer Parkway Phase 1 is under construction and developed, that certainly provides for an opportunity to more kind of shift the entry point.
Placer Parkway Phase 1, does that go to basically Fittiament Road?
Foothill. So Phase 1 goes to Foothill, Phase 2 would go to Fittiament, and so-
And Foothill would-
At the first interchange?
Or up there?
Yeah, that is Foothill.
All right. Okay.
So what did you say? Can you repeat that?
For Placer Parkway, Phase 1 goes to the Foothill Boulevard, that first interchange. Phase 2 is the Fittiament Boulevard interchange, which is the second one that's noted on this map.
So you're starting on the east then?
Correct. For Placer Parkway, correct. In terms of the phasing of Placer Ranch in and of itself, I think currently, through the specific plan process, we'll have kind of a more higher-level phasing plan associated with that. We're envisioning more the low-density residential that's adjacent to existing neighbors to potentially be the first phase, and then kind of going from there.
So this analysis in Phase 1, will it include a use permit, or?
Well, we're taking this down to a specific planned level and getting the environmental documentation, a full-blown EIR at a project-level analysis. Certainly, they'd have to come through with their, you know, improvement plans and things like that, but no use permit per se, as long as they're consistent with entitlements.
That would be subsequent to the specific plan?
Correct.
For all phases?
Correct.
Okay.
Are there any other questions of staff at this time? Thank you.
Thank you very much. With this, I'd like to turn it back to Sherry Conway to conclude the presentation.
So basically, just to dovetail with where Michelle was, oops, I'm going the right direction here. Where do we go from here? So before you today, just for an information item, is the status of the new Sunset area plan. I like your name, I'm going to take that one under advisement. Maybe we should have a contest, name that area. Basically, we'll have the board weigh in on Tuesday, as EJ mentioned. From there, we've already actually begun a pretty robust evaluation of the existing 1997 Plan's policies, whether or not they're still applicable, if they worked, why, if they did not work, why. And based on that exercise that my consultant team and I are in the throes of right now, we'll actually be coming up with new policies in some instances, recommendations for revising some of the objectives and standards, and how we're going to actually implement this brand-new plan. We'll bring that plan forward more or less about the same time that the specific plan will be coming forward. So there's a fair amount of work on top for staff in the upcoming months in terms of reviewing, providing input, adapting, changing, and then ultimately, we'll be coming before your commission in the next coming months to get that same kind of input on the actual draft plan. So we're shooting for October to actually see the area plan. And because the specific plan nests inside the area plan, so here's your general plan, here's the area plan or community plan, and then underneath that is your specific plan. So they're connected, and they have to be complementary and consistent and speak to one another. So the area plan in which the specific plan will nest, I envision to really come forward in draft form during the month of October, as well, already underway, is a fairly in-depth vision plan exercise. So identifying, what is this all going to look like, you know, when it's done? Because that plays into our marketing and our ability to sell the Sunset area. And because we have two different consultant teams on this project, there's a lot of interface between our two teams, McCann-Somps' team, my team led by Meteor Harnish. So we're working to make sure on the fringes of the Placer Ranch project where it meets the Sunset project, we have complementary, not necessarily identical, but we certainly want a vision plan that's reflective of each of the sort of districts that you saw in that map earlier. So whether it's an entertainment district or the more R&amp;D district, we want the thematic, the streetscaping, the lighting, the landscaping to all speak to what it is that that area represents. So that's actually underway right now. Once we have some actual, the technical studies are coming in right now, and our team is also working on infrastructure outside of Ranch, we'll be able to feed that data into our subconsultant, who's going to be preparing the capital improvement and finance plan. So we'll actually get to start to see, how much is this thing going to cost? You know, we know that backbone infrastructure is critical, we know where it needs to go. Now we know some land uses, so those land uses drive things like capacities and sizes of pipes. How much is it going to cost? And then ultimately, the board gets to decide how we're going to pay for it. So as Michelle mentioned, it's one EIR. We're preparing one EIR for the area plan and the specific plan. We're analyzing at a programmatic level the Sunset area plan. We're analyzing at a project level the Placer Ranch specific plan. So much more detailed level of analysis, obviously, for Placer Ranch. They'll nest within one another, and our hope is that we kick that off in the coming weeks with the notice of preparation that we'd like to get released. A scoping meeting will be scheduled shortly thereafter. Obviously, you all will be notified of that. And then, as Michelle mentioned, our goal really is to bring forward for your deliberations and hearings in late 2017, this project. So with that, I'm happy to answer any final questions, thoughts, questions, concerns.
Any questions of staff at this time? Okay, additional questions? I should say, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, a member of the audience would like to address the commission on this updated plan, and I think the name's already been changed, because in the subject says Sunset area plan, and then down in the first line, it says General Community Plan Update, Sunset Industrial Area Plan. So I think they took industrial out of the title, at least at the top of the memo. Anyone in the audience would like to comment on the plan as it's progressing? Mr. Laduka, I know you wouldn't sit there still for the whole time. For the record, your name, please.
Marcus Laduka, 3200 Douglas Boulevard. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to first compliment Sherry and Meteor Harnish, not only their work to date on this, but also for their outreach to property owners. My client, Brett Baumgarten, has property that's, I don't know if we can go back to the plan here.
Oops.
So, right here. That's his property. He has spent quite a number of millions of dollars redeveloping the former Formica property and getting that leased up, bringing forward an industrial park project that you, this commission approved in July of this year, and he's moving forward, he's got his permits. He's moving forward to develop that site now, and it's absolutely essential to him. He's brought already quite a number of primary wagerer jobs to the area and is continuing to market the property and bring in more tenants to the site to retain his light industrial land use designation as shown by the plan here, and also to retain his industrial park zoning. Again, he's moving forward with the rest of his development, the rest of his property. It's a total of 210 acres, the overall property. And so it's, we really enjoyed working with staff to try to make sure that the goals of the county and the goals of property owners such as Brett are being met as this plan moves forward. So again, our thanks and appreciation to Sherry, to Meteor Harnish, as we look to continue to bring that project forward, as you approved back in July. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Laduka? No? Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Okay, seeing nobody jump at the podium here. Is any further questions that staff may ask, want to ask the staff, or? No? Any final comments by staff? No? Okay. Well, I think that probably what concludes our meeting here, I believe. So I think we'll turn the meeting, if there are no further business. You hit. There you go, there. Give them a good back.
Official.
Thank you for attending.